Good evening, everyone. I call to order the August 17th, 2020 Business Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone to silence in the audience, to please silence your cell phones and electronic devices. Ms. Bolton, please leave.
Thank you, Madam President. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wagoner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates.
Present.
Ms. Bolton.
Present.
Mrs. Bowers.
Present.
Mr. Lindy.
Here.
Mr. Messer.
Mr. Morosky.
Here.
President Jones.
Here. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting July 30th, 2020, the special meeting August 30th, 2020, and the business meeting August 3rd, 2020.
So moves.
So moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose. Minutes are approved as presented. We have no committee reports to approve tonight, so we're going to move right on to our this evening's presentation. Superintendent Mitchell?
Yes, so I'm excited to present tonight's presentation. Sharra Fisher-Jackson, who is the Executive Director for Preschool Promise, is going to provide an update to us regarding preschool, and so we're excited to hear from Sharra and see what good news is happening with Preschool Promise. Thank you so much, Sharra, for being with us this evening.
Thank you so much for having me. I appreciate it. We have had so much going on in our early childhood education world in the last few weeks, and so I'm happy to provide an update. You will see on the first slide kind of a snapshot of where we are with the Responsible Restart Ohio. I'm sure that everyone heard that the governor announced that childcare programs were allowed to return to pre-COVID ratios beginning August 19th, and the second rounds of guidelines on health and safety being a priority in terms of social distancing, how to assess symptoms and physician referrals, who to notify, and how to keep everyone healthy and safe. Not only the kids that are in the childcare and preschool space, but also the parents during drop-off, as well as the staff that are there supporting and teaching. Those new guidelines came out. One of the conditions was that if providers were going to remain at reduced ratios, they would have an opportunity for grant support for August and September. Those guidelines were released on the 8th and the 10th. As you can imagine, with limited funds left from the CARES Act, that those funds are very restricted, and grants for family care providers are also very restricted, and really only for those that have opened post-pandemic. So we are monitoring closely what impact this has on the overall early childhood education system to make sure that our preschool providers are stable and are able to safely reopen and welcome kids back. You will see on the next page kind of a status of where we are on the next slide involving enrollment and tuition assistance and making those high-quality preschool seats accessible. Through our extended learning session in June, July, and August, we have 320 students that were enrolled. The purpose of that session was to make sure that we tried to mitigate what is normally the summer slide loss, as well as the several months of slide that we had when there was an immediate shutdown of childcare programs in preschools. So we did have 320 preschoolers return to those classroom learning spaces. We've also done specific modifications to make enrollment easier during this session. Getting documents notarized has been challenging, as you can imagine, getting income affidavits and all of those things to facilitate enrollment, to make sure that we can start in person on August 24th. We have modified our application to do that. We also have looked back to all of our pending applications to see if we can reach back to those students and families and see how we can clear up those pending applications. We are continuing with the open enrollment process, doing parent engagement activities to get parent input and voice, to talk about how they feel about returning to the classroom, what their question and concerns are. I'm very proud of the preschool chats that we have been doing because it is really an opportunity for a candid conversation through Facebook Live for parents to raise any sorts of questions they may have, and providers to respond. The most recent one was on health and safety and returning to the preschool classroom, and we actually had a provider talk about her experiences in having a COVID exposure, having to shut down and notify parents, and then having to reopen and welcome students again, and how that process worked. We are also continuing with our parent meetings and family webinars on managing health and wellness for your family, on new movement activities for your preschoolers, overall family support. That's kind of a stretch for us beyond the traditional education things, yoga, health and wellness, and managing all of that. We've also initiated a new text campaign so that we text our parents every other week to keep them informed with tidbits and things that are going on, as well as doubling our direct mail outreach and touches. And I will say that we have tripled the number of parents that are joining our Facebook page. If any of you may have tried to visit that page and requested to be a part, we are restricting it solely to Preschool Promise parents and those who are interested parents, because that was the request of parents to make it a safe space for discussion and posting. You'll also see we're upping our outreach strategy. We're able to do some in-person activities and digital events. We are visiting preschools now to do enrollment for kids. We're also participating in community events. This weekend's Black Family Reunion was a great opportunity for us to distribute almost 1,000 pieces of literature in the handout materials, even though we know we could have done more in person. We've made the best of that opportunity. And we are also convening provider engagement opportunities and cohort work groups by regions of the city, and our first one that we had was in the West Side, to really bring providers together to talk about questions, concerns, what's going on in early childhood education, and also inviting to that space with those cohorts, those that are part of the Preschool Promise, and those that we are recruiting to join as well. On the next slide, you will kind of see a community provider snapshot that tells you as of 7:31 what our provider community looked like. We are pleased to say that we have 236 community providers engaged, and 93% of them have made the commitment to, if they were not already open, to being open by the end of August. What we know is the number of high-quality open seats for Preschool Promise preschoolers changes daily, depending on providers, how they want to change ratios, whether or not they have temporary closures, how soon paperwork is processed to get those seats filled. We have implemented a new system where every week we sort of get an update through text to kind of treat track of those, as well as doing some extended advertising to make sure all of those seats are filled. On the next slide, you will also see the deliberate intentional work that we are really doing to make sure that we continue to add more high-quality seats to the system. So this is our, excuse me, 2021 plan for quality improvement. Our goal is to have 200 new high-quality seats, but please know that this is based on pre-COVID ratios. So we know the number of high-quality seats that we may be able to create will vary based on that. I am proud to say that even during COVID, we had 11 providers that continued on their high-quality journey, had their review by ODJFS, and have been awarded additional stars to reach that high quality. We are very proud of the 2019-2020 outcomes because we had 51 providers that increased stars, 82 new high-quality seats in our Gap neighborhood, and you will notice the 23 providers that reached high quality is more than double of what we accomplished last year. And keep in mind that this is only nine months of activity because we shut down with those reviews in March. So the quality improvement team, our coaching partners, and our community providers have really been doing an outstanding job to reach high quality. On the next slide, you'll see also a continuation of our community engagement and outreach activities and some specific campaigns. The Provider Spotlight is something that we're driving on social media so that every day you will see a new provider highlighted on our Facebook page that has open, high-quality seats and vacancies at their location. We're doing a family preschool celebration in which kids that are going to preschool for the first time will have pictures onsite of their first day at preschool to share their experience. We're continuing with the Mission Moments where providers do an in-depth dive with two- to five-minute video, really sharing their experiences with the Preschool Promise. We have 17, 18 of those that we've done out in the community. Our goal is to make sure by the end of the fiscal year next year, we have visited every provider and allowed them to share their experience, documented that, and so that we can share that with others as well. Our Summer Snackable campaign has really been driven by our board to say, how do we make sure everyone understands the importance of early childhood education and the Cincinnati Preschool Promise mission, so they will get three snackable contents every week that they can like, post, and share. So many of you have shared those on Facebook as well, and we appreciate those and like those, not just as, again, focused on CPP, but scholarly articles, NPR newsreading articles to really talk about what's happening in early childhood education. We launched today our Mask Up campaign where we've distributed hundreds of Cincinnati Preschool Promise masks throughout the city and asked everybody to take pictures of them masking up to show the importance of that. We also are in the last week of our Back to School Supply Drive for a Smart Start. The African-American Chamber of Commerce is partnering with us and generously offered to get backpacks and school supplies for our preschoolers. These backpacks and school supplies are not to replace their in-classroom learning or for them to have in the classroom, they're really for them to take home. When we talked to our providers and families and said, what is the greatest need? They said, we need learning materials at home that are similar to what we have in the classroom. If our child misses a day, if someone in our family gets sick, if our provider has to close, we need to make sure that they have learning materials that are similar to what they have in the classroom, and that is really what those Smart Start return packs are. It is our goal to make sure that every environment is a learning environment. You will see some of the stats that have really, we've been working hard to increase our community engagement. Our Facebook posts are up, our direct mail contact is up, and we're getting more hits on our community provider newsletters every day. And you will see in the next slide, while it's good to talk about our operational success and what we've accomplished, it's also good to see the pictures and the faces of the families, of the providers, of the kids, of the outreach that we've done. So this is kind of just a picture of many of our providers, some that are celebrating star celebrations like Mount Washington Baptist, some that are opening brand-new centers like Cozy Home, who's gone from a family childcare provider to a fabulous new site in the Avondale Town Center. But I just wanted you to also see that the stats are good, numbers are good, but these are the people. On the last slide, really giving you just a snapshot of where we are looking forward with Preschool Promise, and that is looking at kindergarten readiness. Our evaluation, external evaluation with Innovations is on track. It will be released in September along with our annual report, but really talking about in this era, how we reimagine what kindergarten readiness is, and our focus is on two years of quality early childhood education, and maybe kindergarten readiness isn't the only way that we continue to measure that. We know that this year we are likely to have lower enrollment numbers and slower movement in reaching those quality improvement goals, and many times when we reimagine what our goal is, it's provider stability and support. We want all of our community providers to stay in business, to continue to provide those quality seats, and to stay in touch with the families and the kids. We know that we're doing parent engagement differently. We're focusing on workforce and making sure that any provider that has an extended need for teachers because of classroom divisions and lower ratios, because of shifts, that we are able to support that childcare workforce with our two new wage pilot initiatives that we closely track, the availability of quality seats, recognizing that while we are focused on preschool, our funding is on preschool, changes in the infant toddler space in zero-to-three, and changes in the school age space have a direct impact on the ability to provide quality seats in preschool, and keeping a very close track of that. Continuing and expanding build on our community partnership with organizations like, again, the African-American Chamber of Commerce, like Childhood Food Solutions. LaRosa's Pizzas, believe it or not, who did a big campaign for us and sent out a sticker on registering for preschool on every pizza box on a really congested, busy weekend, so we were able to get a couple thousand touchpoints out with pizza delivery that they did on that concentrated weekend and through the week. So thinking outside of the box about who our partners are and strategic shifts and how we consider success in this environment. So that's kind of a snapshot of where we are with the Preschool Promise.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to open up for questions or comments from the board. Okay, Mr. Messer, Ms. Bowers, and Ms. Bolton.
Yes, thank you, President Jones. Sharra, thank you for that update. All those great successes couldn't come at a better time when we're looking at our renewal for the levy this fall. So that's very exciting, and to see 51 centers who have increased their quality, I mean, that's really what this was all about. And, you know, strong preschool means strong kindergartners and strong first graders and second graders and third graders. So thank you for all your work there. Love the parent engagement that you talked about. I think that's really great, but congratulations to all the great work that you've had in spite of the pandemic. The one question I have, as we're all going to be closely looking at data for our return to our next normal, are you doing any sort of tracking or dashboard that would be another audience that we could have as a metric just to assess, you know, what going back to your next normal has looked like? Are you doing anything that would be a dashboard or anything we could share with our families and community?
So in terms of quantitative numbers of how many are returning?
Yeah, and, well, and so now that you're kind of getting back into your, the more normal pre-COVID numbers, tracking, you know, like your staff, students, families, kind of your testing protocol and all that, but what that has led to as far as any increase in risk or whatever?
So we are tracking. So a couple of things. One, providers are required to report any exposure or closures to ODJFS and the Department of Health. That is, and we have also asked them to inform us as well, just so that we can offer supports, not that we can micromanage, because there is a regulatory agency and a licensing agency that does that. That is not the Preschool Promise, that is ODJFS, right? So we are trying to monitor that, but also in terms of quality seats and where we are, we have a mechanism where we monitor attendance on a monthly basis. There are rapidly changing things that are happening with preschool providers on a weekly basis that we try to track, but to be completely honest with you, monthly is a better snapshot for what we do because of the fluctuation. So if someone submits an application on Monday that says there are open seats, it may take three to five days for that application to be processed. It also may take three to five to six to 10 calls for that provider to also find the appropriate preschool space that can also provide sibling care, but also may be able to do preschool and after-school in the same site. So our system is a little bit different in how we're able to dashboard and data, but you will see at the end of our monthly results, we are tracking changes that we see in the availability of high-quality seats, and we're also tracking attendance. I will say that that data, I don't think will be as rich until we get into September with an August 24th start date and the transition from the extended learning session that ends next Friday and the immediate start to school again. So yes, data informed in how we do that, our data may look a little bit different in our collection in terms of bandwidth and time than it does for a traditional CPS preschool classroom.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Bowers?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Jackson, for that robust presentation. First of all, I would like to say that I'm happy that the state actually had allowed you guys to go back to pre-COVID ratios. That's important. An additional funding for those who are still having some ratio limits, I think that's important and will be helpful for those preschools that are in need. I love all of the outreach that you mentioned. I've been seeing a lot on social media from multiple, with you and some of the multiple preschool sites, The Post, Above &amp; Beyond. Congratulations on that engagement, especially around the social emotion. I heard some social emotional supports and strategies that are being given to parents, and I love all of that. Congratulations on the improvement of stars for a lot of centers that I heard have gone up a star or so, and on your collaboration with the multiple partners in the community, especially African-American Chamber. That Smart Start backpack, that's kind of catchy, I like that. And I'm glad that parents have identified that they want something as equivalent to the classrooms to work on at home, saying that they are a part of their child's education. So that was huge. And also, can you tell me, on your chart, I saw provider type TA versus Q1, can you tell me what that means?
Yes, those that are receiving tuition assistance versus those that are in quality improvement. So tuition assistance are three, four, or five, quality improvement are one or two. We have a few that are still unrated because their applications are pending with the state.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bolton.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate it. Two things, you mentioned, and I agree with you completely, about the kindergarten readiness and needing to probably have some other ways to measure, but will the test regarding kindergarten readiness still be administered?
As far as I know, we are, there's a call convening, I think today's the 17th, tomorrow the 18th. We are staying in close collaboration with our other Ohio preschool initiatives as well, but as far as I know, there hasn't been an alteration or a change, but groups are regularly convening to say, what will that look like? As you know, that will also impact, once we get that information, how we will do the external evaluation, and at what point we have to consider, what is that outcome, right? What does it look like for kindergarten readiness? And I would hope that we would get to a way of, we are measuring that, but measuring that with controls in place that accommodate for what has happened in the last six to eight months and will continue to happen throughout the year.
Yeah, I think it's great to have, keep that in mind, that this has not been a normal year that's been completed, but I still think it would be valuable to see what the differences might be, but more importantly, that you have other, you know, supplemental or complementary ways of evaluating as well, or if there's a way mathematically to figure something that makes it apples to apples, which it really isn't. But I appreciate that the assessment will continue because the assessments have really been quite good for proving the point regarding preschool, whether it's at CPS or with Preschool Promise. So I'm glad to, want to know more about that, and I'm anxious to see what that might entail. The other part is just, unfortunately, a COVID question, and I'm not asking the results or how many or whatever, but you all, many folks have throughout this summer that are providing both childcare and preschool kinds of experiences. You've had kids and grown-ups in buildings together, and there is some sort of track record that's, you know, real live in time. And I was interested, I know that you don't do necessarily the daily attendance, but over time, there's an attendance, not to ask any questions as to how many or who or what or what have you, but you have any general conclusions about, you've been able to stay open and function?
Right.
And I think that's a big message for everybody, and I, and what, and I know there's multiple folks with, you know, hopefully with the, obviously, required protocols that are handed down from above, so to speak, but it might, just if you could talk a little bit more about your COVID experience in generalities, not in any specific numbers, that would be helpful for me.
Sure. I think the first challenge was, as is always the case, is a comfort level that people have with returning, right? We had a certain number of providers who said, yes, we're willing to be open and can follow all the protocols, but because of the timing, we had many providers who said, we would not have normally been open, June, July, and August anyway, we're not going to invest the extra effort in saying, let's try to open in even the most challenging time, and we don't know when parents are going to return. So I think there is, there are two time markers that I would just call attention to you. There was pandemic operations that happened from March to June 1st, and then normal operations that resumed June 1st and after, right? So those are different, and how we measure them and track them. And I think the lessons learned that we have is that lower ratios were beneficial, that exposures will happen and they have to be managed, and there are few people as good at that as a very conscientious childcare preschool provider that was accustomed to wiping down, washing down, cleaning and sanitizing everything every day 10 times anyway, right? So we had many providers who said, this is the work that we already do, already amplified. I will tell you, I was very surprised to hear, one of the things that they thought was the most useful tool that they did not have approved before in the system is a portable sink, as a game changer and as a learning tool, right? To say, we're going to talk about hand washing, we couldn't have those before, and now we have them. It allows us to not only make sure that we comply with all of our sanitation procedures, but the kids really enjoy it, and how do we learn through that? I think our other learning is, what we really realize is, particularly with family-based childcare, not only, but particularly, there is a communication and a network system in place, right? Because we asked our community providers, what would happen if you had to get in touch with parents in an emergency? And I said, would you be able to do it? And the answer was yes. So that led us to believe as an organization, because we may not know what that communication mechanism is, because it may not fit in our box of what we think is appropriate parent engagement, it doesn't mean it's not happening and it's not there, right? And that's the, you know, it's the trust the provider to do what they do. They are educators and they are professionals, and this is what they do. And so really relying on them to say, we know that you are the direct line of communication with the families, how can we support that, and how can we do it too as the Preschool Promise? But the reality is, with a staff of six and 1,000 families that we touch, we will continue to rely on providers to say, how do you continue to be that gross context? And we learned in COVID that it happens, right? We also learned better how to communicate with our providers, and it's not email. It is, it is an influx of information, it is a personal customized touch that we have to continue, right? And I, I thank you for the question because it gives an opportunity to say to me, to say to you, I am proud and honored of my coworkers of the Cincinnati Preschool Promise staff team who took calls 24/7, who did the extra to say, we're not sure that food is necessarily what we had envisioned in doing, but it's what we have to make happen, and that in a COVID environment, what people most need is support and empathy to talk about how we do this together. And I would hope that how we come out of this is that more providers and families see Cincinnati Preschool Promise as a partner in early childhood education and community advancement, not only as a funding source.
Thank you. That helps me a great deal. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lindy?
Thanks, President Jones. Sharra, I just want to say thank you for your presentation, for all your hard work. I know I've shared this with you before, but I think investing in a high-quality preschool education for kids is one of the best no-brainers in education, and I want to say thank you for all of your work. I only had one question, which was, can we be doing things to be more helpful and more supportive of you?
I, I think, you know, we appreciate the support of all of the board members liking and sharing, and I have to particularly call out some of you who are social media gurus, you have been liking and sharing, and we appreciate that. I think to carry the message then of, of the importance of early childhood education and how the system fits together, I think we're facing also a long haul at the federal level in making sure we're all aware of what's going on and what's happening in terms of childcare, to make sure that we're aware of that. And I also think, looking forward, manage expectations, right? I can paint a perfectly rosy picture that looks very good, but things are at a critical point, right? We have providers every day who are making decisions on whether or not they have to stay open. We have families every day that are making decisions on whether or not they want to send their kids to school. So while at the same time promoting the work that we do and saying what it is, being realistic about what that looks like, because we know, we set a goal of enrolling 1,000 children, and we know they're out there, we're not going to get there this year, right? That's, that's, that's not realistic, and we're going to get there, but how are we going to keep our commitment to early childhood education, right? What do those to-go packs look like that we're providing for kids? How are we working together to find new solutions? So I say, more of what you're doing, you know, in promoting and talking about it. I'm thankful to Vera Books and the entirely Early Childhood Education team, and I think, be ready, because we may come to you with some out-of-the-box ideas, some innovative suggestions to say, this is how we imagined Preschool Promise to look, this is how we laid it out in the master agreement, but this is what we may need to consider now as a different operational way to meet our mission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I think that completes the presentation, Ms. Jackson. We want to thank you for presenting, and, you know, we know we'll see you We want to thank you for presenting, and, you know, we know we'll see you soon. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, and thank you Superintendent Mitchell as well for continuing to be such a good partner for us at the Preschool Promise.
Okay, so we're going to move on to kudos. Anyone have kudos? All right, Ms. Bates, please present the retirements.
Yes, and I just, I just have one, and that is Marcia Marcus, who was one of our teachers. So we congratulate Ms. Marcus on her retirement and thank her for her service to our kids.
Thank you. All righty, so we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings, we are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Okay, in accordance with board policy, employees of the district are strongly encouraged to direct questions, concerns, and comments regarding district reopening plans to your building representative or your building leadership instead of making public comment during tonight's forum. Employees can also utilize the district's hotline to report any safety violations. We are doing this not to mute any teachers or any employees, but really it's more about the efficiency of our communication process, wanting to make sure that your concerns are directed in the right way. So we would, we would appreciate if all employees would support us in that. And I will say that anyone who does not comply with a request around this matter where you're bringing up things like personnel issues, you are subject to disconnection from the video conference at the discretion of the board. You will get recognized, and we're hoping, we're asking you for your support in helping us get through this hearing of the public. Okay, so here are the specific instructions for participation. Members of the public who wish to speak during the meeting must send a request by clicking on the hand icon on your screen. Please do so now. Treasurer Wagner will again be our timekeeper, and Mr. Daniel Hoynes will assist in calling each speaker in the order received. Once the request has been granted, you will receive a notice on your screen, click yes to go interactive. If you do not want your video active, please disable the video camera icon. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Again, please refrain from discussing any personnel items. We respectfully ask that your public commentary be respectful of all of those who may be listening in. Thank you for your cooperation. Okay, Mr. Hoynes, who do we have?
Yes, we're, we've just brought over, our first speaker is Laney. Go ahead, Laney.
Hello, hi. I was calling because I needed to know, we have two kindergartners who need to retire to, I mean, they need to go to school, and we have no information. We don't know if they're getting laptops or iPads. Is there any plan about kindergartners and first graders?
Okay, let me, let me just respond to that. Laney, we typically don't respond to questions, but given that you're here, let's just say, do you have access to internet?
Yes.
Because you can get the information on the CPS website. All of that information is on the website.
I haven't, I've been on the website for weeks and I haven't seen anything.
Okay, is there a way, Superintendent, thank you.
Yes, hello Laney, I'm calling you Laney since I don't know your last name. Are you able or willing to put your email address in the chat box and I will contact you ASAP? Or I can give you my contact information and you can give me a call. So which would you prefer?
I'll send you my email in the chat.
Okay, and then I will get in touch with you as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Hoynes.
Yes, our next speaker is Brandon, followed by Carrie. Go ahead, Brandon.
Yes, hi. I had prepared a very carefully scripted description of my feelings about the situation that's now ongoing. However, given the recent announcement that teachers shouldn't be voicing their opinions, I instead just want to say that I am strongly opposed to that ruling and think that our voices should have a chance to be heard. Thank you very much.
Okay, let me, I want to clarify, we're not saying you can't speak, but we're, we're asking you that if there are very specific questions or concerns that you have, since today is the first day, we're asking you to just take it directly to the building leadership or your rep or even the hotline. We're, we're open to hearing concerns, but again, just trying to be a little more efficient in the process. You have a right to speak. So I wanted to be clear about that. Okay. And Mr. Hoynes?
Okay, our, our next, yes, our next speaker is Carrie. Go ahead, Carrie.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. So, sorry, so first of all, as per always, thanks for this and for your team, and very open to the public and making this all very transparent for us all. Couple of questions. One, as far as where people are in need of tuition and assistance, where is the deficit? And is there a way to find, like, community-wide, what would that look like as a means to try to help those people who are still deficient in that, as far as, you know, people who might have to leave their home for work with regard to, you know, this being at home and remote learning? Secondly, I've asked this, I've asked this multiple times with regard to outdoor education, have yet to receive an answer. I posed this at the last meeting, and again, in a, in a message that I wrote and have heard nothing back, but there's a school in Montgomery County that is doing that this fall where they've gone outdoor for grades two to 12. There's an entire initiative for the National Council's COVID-19 Outdoor Learning Initiative, which is a multifaceted approach, utilizing building engineers, utilizing outdoor education specialists, using all kinds of people. Has the board even looked at or responded to that? Because we had good weather through October here, I don't understand why that wasn't posed and what that might look like forthcoming. I wanted to know what about materials that are similar to the Montessori classroom for those of us who have Montessori children in their home, you know, with how this is going to roll out? And also I wanted to know with regard to expectations of your employees after hours who wear badges, because I had an issue with an employee, as was addressed once with the council, who I did not feel answered my question even appropriately and was somewhat paternalistic and patronizing. But you talk about social emotional well-being and trauma-informed, and my child had to see a trauma counselor at Children's Hospital with regard to this, and two of my children have now negated going to their first choice school when they have tested both into it as double exceptional, and yet they both have chosen to not go to that school because of an employee there that makes them feel unsafe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Erin Up.
Hey, this is Erin, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to come on, I wanted to let you know, I have listened to your board meetings this summer, and I know how hard all of these decisions have been of all of board members to make. You have had to listen to lots of information from multiple sources and make very hard decisions. I heard the emotions in your voices, and I really appreciate all of your time and energy that you have put into making decisions in this unprecedented situation. My question is regarding athletics. Given the success of summer training with zero transmissions across athletes, and given the decline in positivity rates over the last seven days in Cincinnati, would you be willing to reconsider an immediate return to interscholastic play starting August 21st as outlined by OSHA and the governor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Nicole Feely.
Hi, thank you, sorry for that moment. Okay. Thank you, everybody. Teaching is emotional labor, and as we know, jobs that require emotional labor also require the ability to balance what is taken with what is returned. Educators generally work with an imbalance. We are responsible for providing resources that in many instances should have come from social programming. We have a teacher shortage, and this disproportion is the largest contributing factor to teachers' decisions, excuse me, to teachers' decisions to leave the field. It is imperative that they practice self-care, yet in a situation as we are currently in, it is impossible for us to practice self-care because we are too busy practicing self-preservation. I see that you are all attending this meeting remotely, and I believe that you should be doing that during a pandemic. And I also know that I can trust that you are doing your jobs even from home because you are professionals. I would ask, teachers are professionals, and I would ask that be considered as we move forward with remote learning. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Samantha Messer. Go ahead, Samantha.
Hey. Hi, everyone. I'm Samantha Messer, I teach at Chase. I, I guess I'll just speak frankly, I wrote something, but it doesn't seem appropriate anymore. I don't know if this is a personnel issue, so if I'm bringing this up inappropriately, I apologize. But I feel like I've been at these meetings and I, I've been like out here putting all my information on blast, like, you know, I feel like I'm having to share all this stuff about me being a vulnerable, in a, in a vulnerable population, and just so that, you know, we can make smart choices for people like me. And I don't feel like we're being heard. On Friday, the district sent out an email that there were no provisions for staff who are in vulnerable populations, that we were not mentioned, we weren't acknowledged at all. And, you know, maybe this is something that will get worked out with HR, and I really hope that it does, but it does really hurt to be ignored. And I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speech, speaker is Christopher Johnson. Go ahead, Mr. Johnson.
We do after, well, attract for kids in Evanston and Withrow, and they are shutting the facility from 8:30 a.m. until 8:30 p.m. They've been harassing us for about the last week. They finally kicked everybody off the track except us. So I just wanted to voice my concern about that. It's been going on for the last three weeks. They said that no one is allowed on the track other than players for Withrow. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Lindsay. Go ahead, Lindsay.
Hi. I just wanted to speak to you all tonight to ask that you give teachers the option to work from home. By having the students participating in remote learning, we can agree that it is not safe enough for people to be in close proximity to each other. One would think that adults would be able to follow stringent safety guidelines with less issues than a child. Unfortunately, that's just not the case. Nowadays, adults can't seem to agree if the pandemic is even real. While I've spent my summer avoiding public spaces and always wearing a mask, other adults have enjoyed maskless outings with their friends. I don't want to, nor do I have the right to police the actions of my coworkers. I'll go so far as to say it's far above my pay grade. When my coworkers remove their masks while administration is across the building, it should not fall on my shoulders to turn them in for the sake of my safety. How will that impact our relationships? We are professionals with integrity, please treat us as such and give all CPS staff with the ability to, ability to choose whether to work in the buildings or remotely if their position allows for it. Thank you.
Okay, I, I'd just like to comment. I, I think, you know, the board really wants to be fair in this hearing, and we don't want to cut people off. I think the, where we're, where it seems like people don't understand is that we have heard all of this. And, you know, at some point, when we make a decision, we know that there's going to be lots of people who are okay with the decision and lots of people who are not okay with the decision. And we keep trying to revisit and revisit and revisit the same decision. But I want you to know that we're documenting, we hear everything you say, we, we're listening, we're here, we get emails, we know what your concerns are. And again, I'm going to ask you, if you are a teacher, if you are an employee, I'm going to ask you to send those same comments and questions and concerns to your building leadership. They will get to the district office and will be recognized and addressed.
Okay, our, our next speaker is Holly Miller, followed by Kim Tobin. Go ahead, Ms. Miller.
Okay, so I don't feel like I have the right to speak because not only am I a parent, but I'm also an educator at the district. But I will tell you, what I've encountered in my building personally is deplorable circumstances. And there are a few people who are aware of what I've encountered. I will not share publicly for fear of losing my job, but I will tell you that I have deep and grave concerns for the safety and the sanitation practices that are going on within the buildings. I would again request, which I have before, air quality testing in every building. I want every system tested. I feel as a parent, I have the right to know the air quality in my child's building of attendance, and I will not rest, especially based on what I've encountered and my own personal experience working for the district. Sorry to take up your time, hope I'm not in trouble. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We can't hear you, Daniel. You have them muted, Mr. Hoynes.
You're still muted, Dan.
I believe I was, I was next. Kim Tobin?
Kim Tobin.
Is it okay to go ahead and start speaking?
Yes.
Okay. I'm also a teacher, and I recognize that you, the board, has heard all of our concerns, but I will say that it does not feel as if our concerns are being heard. We've been assured of the sanitization of our buildings, but most of them haven't been properly cleaned, and that's been documented. So how can we be confident in high-touch surfaces being sanitized and in our own personal safety? The meetings that we attended today and the meetings that we have this week, there's absolutely no reason why for our own personal safety and the safety of our communities that we can't attend those meetings from the safety of our homes if that's what we need. This pandemic has shown us that teachers are undervalued even more than we knew before, and the saddest part of that is that we now feel undervalued by the very people that are supposed to be standing up for us. The, all we're asking for is to have the choice to keep ourselves safe, because again, we can't police what our colleagues are doing, but what we can do is maintain our own safety. I haven't been in public since March 13th, and this, today was the first time I had to go and be in a large group of people, and I'm going to be perfectly honest with you, I could not sleep last night, I've had panic attacks for the last two weeks. I, I'm barely functioning as a human being, let alone as a teacher, because the concern for my safety is so out of control that I cannot focus on anything else. out of control that I cannot focus on anything else. In order for us to do our jobs, we need to feel safe. In the same way that in order for our students to learn, they need to feel safe. Thank you.
Okay, I hope you can hear me now. The next speaker is Brittany Kirksey, followed by Amanda. Go ahead, Ms. Kirksey.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my question was in regards to the pair of professionals. Is there a clear plan on what we are supposed to do to aid the teachers? Are we coming back to a job? That's all I really wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Kirksey, your question is noted. Your question is noted. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, on a question like that, isn't it possible for, if we were live, you know, the superintendent, you might -- you would normally call on the superintendent to answer that question? Or send somebody to do so?
My -- I -- we can do that, we can do that. But there's a lot of questions being answered. And if we can't answer everybody's question, I would suggest that we continue to do what we're doing, and that's note the question. Or I think that in certain cases, like the one young lady, if people want to give us their information, they can contact -- if the superintendent wants to give us a number, we can give a number so people can call. But this isn't a town hall question. But I understand what you're asking, though.
Well, or at least give the superintendent the opportunity to ask for that person's email or something? If they could? Just like you did with that one, maybe? Because that's a very specific question. I don't know.
Okay. Superintendent, can we -- Ms. Kirksey, is there a number, superintendent, that she can call? This is a personnel concern, guys. That's what I'm trying to say. But is there a number, or should she talk to her building leadership?
Either she could put her email address in the chat box. I will just say that in coordination with all the unions, we identify what each employee group is to do. And Paul McDull, our director for HR, did send that information out to all employees as well as principals. And Paul, correct me if I'm wrong.
That information went to all schools last Friday. And Superintendent Mitchell, you're exactly correct. It detailed what different employee groups would be able to do while we're working in this current environment for the first five weeks.
Yeah. And I don't want to, you know, I do want to let people know that we do hear the concerns. But again, this forum is designed for public commentary, not necessarily to respond directly to questions. And that's why I made the comment earlier that if they were an employee, it would be much easier to go directly to their building leadership or their building rep to get that question answered. Because we can't answer it. We would, you know, if we answered everybody's question today, you know, I don't think it would be possible. That's all I'm saying. So just asking for the things to be a little more streamlined. Ms. Mitchell.
President Jones, just for everyone's edification, I am taking detailed notes and have identified by each follow-up item the PLT member, performance leadership team member, who will be assigned to follow up on that action. So I'm taking those, and I'm texting them saying, "Did you catch that?" And they're saying they caught it. So we have it down. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
That's just important for the public to know. And I appreciate that, Superintendent. That is our normal procedure. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Hoi.
Yes, ma'am. So three more speakers. We have Amanda, followed by Lori Cotton, followed by Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Amanda.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Yes, you have to unmute. You just muted.
Ah, okay, sorry, I've never done this before. I am a teacher at Park was Montessori, and this is personnel, so I'm not going to read my whole long letter. I'll email it. But just in case this wasn't thought of, I just wanted you all to know that today I stayed home because I have a cough, literally on the tail end of a cold. And I had to use a sick day, which I totally get that because that's safest. But I didn't want to miss any of the information and meetings, so I literally still spent the whole day working, even though I was having a sick day. So I, just in case that hasn't been thought of, to allow people who have symptoms but aren't sick enough to not work to still be able to work from home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cotton is next.
Hi, my name is Lori Cotton. I'm a Walnut Hills graduate, a parent of CPS students at Walnut Clark &amp; Spencer, and I've been teaching at Walnut for 18 years. I believe I am CPS. I have prepared remarks tonight that I'm not going to read based on your request, so I will forward them on, although I'm discouraged that I feel a little bit muted. I do want to point out to everyone, since this is a public meeting, that while the decisions may have been made some time ago, teachers were informed three days ago that we were not going to be granted the flexibility to teach from our home despite our proven expertise and experience. So if the theme is flexibility and agility, I ask that the board and the superintendent reconsider this. Thank you.
Okay, our last speaker is CFT President Julie Sellers. Go ahead, Ms. Sellers.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay right now?
Yes.
Yeah. First, I would like to say thank you to Sharah for the great update that she provided on the preschool promise as we move forward with the preschool promise CPS levy in November. But as you know, CFT, our main concern has always been for the health and safety of not just employees, but also for students and families and community. CFT has created a Google Doc for our teachers to voice their concerns around safety. And we are sharing this information with the district leadership and working to get quick resolutions. Some of the teachers have said that they don't feel safe necessarily reporting issues to the leadership in their building and that they feel safer reporting it to us. And we have been getting questions and concerns all day today, really. But we have been having, addressing questions and concerns literally 24/7 for the last, I don't know how many weeks. And so I'm sure that you all are receiving the same types of questions. We are working to get all concerns addressed. And I think that the district hotline number is a great option for teachers, especially for things such as if they don't have sanitizing products that they need. I did have a teacher today say to me, "I did not have any products in my room." I called the hotline, and literally, within a couple hours, it showed up at my door. And so I thought that was a great positive around the hotline. And I would also like to request that I could meet in executive session to address some of the more specific concerns as we move forward because I do think that we do have to keep an open door. And I think that there are some district-wide breakdowns, especially around cleanliness. I do hope that the district provides some clear options for ADA accommodations and FMLA. The HR hotline that was put in place this week should be beneficial to, for all employees to maneuver through this information because that has been very inconsistent up until now. One of the issues, and this kind of goes along with the teacher who spoke just before me, that she had to use a sick day because she had a cough. Every single cough is not COVID. But every -- and so people are going to be forced to stay home for more often. There is a teacher that I know personally in the district who, her husband tested positive for quarantine. She's been tested and put on mandatory quarantine by the Health Department, even though she is not sick, and it was her husband. But she is at high risk and should not come back to school. But she is unable to even work from home, even under a mandatory quarantine. So today, she missed the opening staff meeting. She's missing the professional development. She's missing everything this week, even though she isn't sick. I think that if it is a mandatory quarantine and the person is not sick, they should be able to, at least during this time, as we're trying to set up orientations and build those relationships with students and families, that they should not be excluded from doing that. So I think that what we need to do, I know every single person cannot possibly have a work from home. But I do think that there are certain circumstances where it is necessary. And I hope that we can just use some common sense decision-making and not just make every decision either, it's either a yes or no answer. So I think that today, we work through issues. But I think that it was, I think that we, it was good that we were there with just adults in the building and that there were not students there as we're working through each one of the school's safety plans. One of the things that I did hear, and I think that should be really brought to everyone's attention, is there were adults in the building. And I heard it reported at many schools of adults not wearing masks in buildings, in rooms with other adults. And so I think that it's something that every single employee in this district, from central office to people who travel or in the classrooms, every single person, no matter what their job is, should make that commitment that they are going to do everything they can to stop the spread and make sure they have their masks on as they enter any of our buildings, especially when there's other employees around. So I just want to say, there's been a lot of work done, and there's a lot of work that needs to still be done. I have had a few teachers even call me and say that they were more impressed with the conditions of their building today than they have ever been in all the years they've been in CPS. So there are some very model schools where the, where the, everything was done above and beyond what their expectations were. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hoi, I'm assuming that Ms. Sellers is the last speaker. Correct?
That's everyone. Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on. We don't have any items for board matters discussion, so we'll move on, Superintendent, for your report.
Yes, I do have an update as they are pulling up my PowerPoint slides. Well, that was great on cue. Thank you. So I want to give you an update from last week, last Wednesday. It seems like it was a long time ago that we met, but it was just last Wednesday, to tell you what's happened in the last few days. So, next slide. So school is open, in terms of our buildings opened back up today with our teachers returning. Our civil service or support staff will return starting on the 19th and for the remainder of the week. So we are gearing up for distance learning and being able to support our students, especially as it relates to connecting our students to Wi-Fi. And so I'm going to talk about that in a little bit more detail in a couple slides. So the Wi-Fi, we were able to get some feedback from people in the community to say, "Look, make this a very simple message if you want to increase the number of people who actually participate in the free Wi-Fi." And so we have produced a flyer that's a very simple flyer, "Free Wi-Fi for CPS Families," phone number, and that will connect you with Cincinnati Bell so that they can get their Wi-Fi up and started. So what we've decided to do is this week, we're going to send out a postcard that looks very similar to this. And on the back is additional information. This flyer, we're going to send to our LSDMCs, PTAs, PTSOs, resource coordinators, JFS, the Faith Alliance. We're also going to be working with our support staff to do outreach to our families when they, when our support staffs return later this week to make contact with families who have not yet connected with us in terms of the free Wi-Fi program. So we do know by every single school, the students who have taken us up on this offer and those who haven't, and so we'll be reaching out to them through a lot of different partners to get the message out about our free Wi-Fi program. You can also see that there is support for Spanish speakers as well. Next slide. So temperature checks. So we have gone through some trainings to make sure that there's someone or multiple people on each staff who are trained in terms of how to do temperature checks. And so we're doing temperature checks coming in the door. That will also now be the experience that you will have when you come to the CPS Board of Education. And so we're doing this across our schools. District-wide professional development started this week, and it will continue throughout this week. And although there is professional development that is taking place, we're also leaving a lot of room and time and space for building staff to be able to meet with each other, to meet in very small groups in their teams, to be able to align the work and to also create coherence. We are doing this in an effort, considering the fact that many, many parents expressed that during the spring and the winter, when we were in distance learning, there wasn't alignment from classroom to classroom and sometimes from school to school. And so this week is really about creating that sense of alignment. Our meal hubs will be open starting next Wednesday from a longer period of time than we ran them when we were open, when our doors first closed. And so our meal hubs were open initially from 11 until 1 o'clock. And then we actually moved it to an hour based upon the uptake that we had in terms of the time of periods that most people came to receive their meals or get their meals. Now, we're going to start giving out meals at every single one of our schools from 12 until 4 o'clock. When people come to get meals, they will get multiple meals, and that will start on August 26th. So we're having a back-to-school kickoff for our employees, all employees, central office, school-based, certificated as well as civil service employees. And that will be on August 20th, and it will be a virtual kickoff. We had planned to have one, a big kickoff, at the convention center. But obviously, that was before COVID hit. And so we will have a virtual kickoff, and that will be this week on August 20th. We're also very excited about our virtual orientations. So there will be two orientations that parents can be a part of. So one orientation is a standard orientation from the district. So here are all the things that parents should be able to expect across our entire district. And we're very excited to be able to offer this virtual orientation on Channel 12, 64, and CW Broadcast. Channel 12 is going to run 150 commercials advertising this virtual orientation. It'll also be an opportunity for us to be able to broadcast the free Wi-Fi program that we have within our district. So we thought to do this, considering the fact that some parents don't have a Wi-Fi right now to even tune into an orientation that would be led by the district or their teacher. And so we figured that television might be a way that we may be able to reach parents. And so we're very excited about this opportunity. There are more to come in terms of the specific date. In addition to the virtual district-level orientation, there will also be specific teacher orientations. So then teachers will also schedule orientations for their students to be able to say, "This is specifically what you can expect and what we need from you and what our expectations are." And then last but not least, this isn't related to the opening of schools, but it is related to our equity policy and resolution. So we were very excited for the African-American Chamber to outline the services and products that we purchased. So a couple of weeks ago, we did this. And the African-American Chamber, they were able to go through their database and then connect businesses that provide the services or products that we most are in need of. And so today, we had a pitch event where we had over 120 partners come to the table and, a virtual table. And with directors from CPS And with, with directors from CPS who hold those contracts and services and products that, that we need to purchase. And so we were able to have a general opening where everyone was in the same room at the same time virtually with the president of the African-American Chamber, Eric Kearney. And I did a, an opening welcome. And then based upon the company's area of expertise, then they were able to go into breakout rooms according to the services or products that they provide. And so we're very excited to launch that this, today, actually today. And our staff will be following up with the African-American Chamber businesses to identify which businesses we believe that we can partner with. In addition to that, we will be setting goals for African-American local-owned businesses to have the opportunity to work with CPS. We're not selling quotas because we know that we can't do that, but we are setting goals. We know what our baseline is, and so we will be setting goals for this year. So I'm very excited about that. In addition, we understand that many of the small businesses, quite honestly, they just don't have the capacity to fill the types of work or product needs that we have, services that we have. And so we are looking and will be bringing to the board shortly the proposal to have all of our major contracts that we have within our district, that all of those contracts must have a provision to be able to subcontract with specifically locally-owned African-American businesses. And so this will be another opportunity for those businesses to get a foot in the door in CPS, but also to work with a larger organization. So we're very excited about that. And that completes my verbal report in addition to the superintendent's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Do board members have questions or comments? Mr. Morawski?
I just want to highlight that last bit, Superintendent, and call it out for the powerful piece that it is by including that provision. I often hear, particularly in the public realm, that we, the excuse for not contracting with black-owned businesses is because they don't have the bandwidth to do X, Y, or Z. And I think this is maybe the first I've ever heard a leader in a public body bring that up. And I just wanted to put a pin in that and highlight it. I think it's innovative. I think it's great. And I think it's really important that we're taking these steps. So I just wanted to say kudos to you, Superintendent Mitchell, and your team. I think that's very sound and we're happy to support.
Thank you, Ms. Bowers.
Yes, thank you, Superintendent Mitchell. And I, and I ditto what Board Member Morawski just said. I thought that was, that was great to hear. And I'm excited to see how that kind of sets off, hopefully like a wildfire. I'm hopeful that it would. But I also want to commend you on the virtual orientation. I thought it was brilliant about the channel broadcasting for some of our families who do not have the connectivity or have barriers to access of information. I think that was, I think we did that with some of our COVID-19 spring. We kind of started that initiative with the television and the cable channels and things like that. And to continue that with even the virtue, I think is an excellent idea. So, so thanks for that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I would, I'd second the, the issue regarding the contracts. I, I do think we have to be careful that we are excluding women-owned companies. And I hate to be the voice that continues to say something like that, but much of the minority in women-owned, those are our highest percentages, frankly. We do better, better among female owners of companies, at least. I think that's our percentage than we do necessarily with African-Americans. So I think anything that increases the minority owned and makes it possible for smaller vendors and smaller contractors to provide. So I would want to see that. I, I'm not sure how it works on the subcontracting. We're not saying chunking the contracts. Or we're saying that we, and we do give points along the way is, you know, for years and years regarding our minority contracts and what have you. So we're not chunking it. We're saying that we would encourage and, and be more positive about subcontracting with minority. And I would just like to add female-owned companies as well. Is that what we're saying? We'd like you to subcontract, not chunk the contract?
Well, we are asking for subcontracting, not chunking. So we are working to increase our female-operated businesses. However, I did not highlight that today because very specifically I was talking about the African-American Chamber and calling that out very specifically.
Yeah, and I would, I would just add to that too, that we do have policy and we do have procedures that also emphasize local. Because that's, that's, so that, if we get that female and the local and the African-American, I think that would be speaking to, to, to our residents as well, rather than outside of our purview. So just to add that, but I think it's great. And I am really excited about the Channel 12 thing. So congratulations.
I, I just wanted to add that, that I do, I agree with Ms. Bolton, but I also want to say that many of those African-Americans, many of those businesses in the chamber are minority and female-owned. So, so that, that's a good deal. So.
Two for one.
Okay.
Sixty percent of.
Any other, any other comments or questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
So much.
Second?
Second.
I need a, Mr. Lindy, thank you. Any discussion, any further discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morawski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the revised report of the treasurer?
No, no.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, just two, the last item, I think it's great that Accelerate Great Schools is contributing to our talent development regarding our principals and administrators. The second, though, not a happy thing, but could the treasurer update us on these contracts? I know they're in the then and now for the UTS, Universal Transportation. There are two of them totaling about $245,000. Is that from last year? If you'll just clear that up for me, that would be great.
Yeah, so we're still trying to clear up last year's invoices, just around the district because of the closure, invoices went everywhere. But this is related to the, the renewal of the transportation contracts that happened in April. Because the invoices are predated to that revised, because somehow they got canceled out of the system. Do you remember reapplying them? Okay, that, that's all it is. It's a timing issue. There's no worries there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments, further discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Hi.
Ms. Bolton?
Hi.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morawski?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes, thank you. Are there any inquiries and updates? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, didn't know, I appreciated the additional communication to our Spanish-speaking community. Didn't know if we were planning to have a town hall for our Spanish-speaking community.
The administration, we have discussed it. We just, we don't have a date set yet in place.
Okay, thank you. And, and then is this possible, that somehow you could make a statement about this air quality piece? I know we've heard three times that our air quality in our buildings has been checked and renovated and all kinds of stuff, but it seems to still be an issue out there as well as the one woman testifying that there's been no COVID transmissions as a result of athletics. But are those, is that, were those correct or can you help us there?
No, so I, I didn't want to interject and answer that when we were, but that's not, that's not accurate. We've had nine students who were practicing sports who have COVID. So I'm not saying where they got COVID. And then we've had three adults who work with the athletes with COVID. So we have definitely had cases of COVID among our athletes. And then as soon as we found it out, then we shut down the program for a period of time and did social distancing and isolating of people and notified everyone, parents, everyone, that this has taken place. But we have had confirmed cases, more cases among students than the adults.
And the air quality piece that, that keeps being mentioned that we don't have air quality checks, or can you again clarify that for the public?
Yes, so Sarah, I'm going to ask for Sarah Trumbull Oliver to come online so she can be very specific about the air quality checks that have been happening.
Yes, thank you. So our Director of Facilities, Robin Brandon, has been working with our HVAC consultants to put a nice one-pager document together that could clearly describe the ventilation changes that we have been making as a result of the COVID safety precautions. For example, they have scheduled daily flush outs, is what it's called, where the, the air is brought in from outside and completely flushes the entire building. And that is on an automated schedule for every building. And so we're putting together a one-pager that could explain that clearly to all of the employees in the buildings. Thank you.
Okay, I, I just wanted to comment. And it really is sort of a follow-up to Ms. Bolton's question, but also more of a commentary. And, and I feel like I at least owe our public an explanation that, you know, these questions come up. They come up over and over and over again. And the intent is not to mute their commentary or dispute it. But I feel very strongly that we need as a board, that we should be following our protocols that we have that hold and, and relying and holding our superintendent and leadership team accountable to get this information. Thus, is the reason why we're asking people to direct those comments through those other sources. Not that they can't speak publicly, but it's more of let's get it in the hands of where the people are addressing it. The board cannot address it. We hear the concerns. We hear them. We hear them over and over and over again. And we do appreciate those, but we can't do anything about it. And nor can we turn our public, I mean, the public forum is becoming a question-and-answer period. And people sometimes get upset because they don't get their questions addressed right away. So the whole intent, in my opinion, is to get them redirected to the proper venue so that they can get their questions more immediately responded to. So I, that's, that's my piece under inquiries and updates. Anybody else have any other inquiries and updates? Mr. Messer?
Yes, and, and the one, I guess, is more, I should have probably said it during kudos. But I have to say, I tuned in to the back-to-school address and was absolutely blown away. And I believe it was one of our principal's daughters who got me all choked up on a Friday morning.
Yeah.
And I just thought, wow, I wish we could share that and share it and share it and share it. That's what, you know, we are working to create world influencers. And I, that, that is our mission statement in a person. So I want to say thanks to the superintendent for that and pulling in partners at Children's and, and really going through the detailed plans. I thought that was great. And then an update for the board is at least one of your resident tree huggers. As you know, the Relief Program last year donated trees for our schools. Reached out to the woman who runs that last year and they were excited to do that. And she, I put the request in this year. I set my calendar and put it in and we did get awarded trees. So I'll be following up the superintendent, so G and facilities. But I just got that word today that they did indeed grant us another selection of trees as we all work collectively to replace our urban canopy and, you know, figure out somehow, some way when those are back this fall or when there's available this fall, to somehow even virtually engage our children in seeing these trees planted in their schoolyards that they can watch and grow, see grow throughout their school year. So just a shout out to the Relief Program and thank them for once again supporting CPS.
Thank you. Any other inquiries and updates? Okay, assignments? Ms. Bolton?
Um, just to the, to, to the superintendent, I'm sure she's already doing this. It probably doesn't require a board assignment, but to do kind of some sort of an audit regarding the cleanliness of all of our buildings, just an additional effort in that way. That was, that seems to be the least we can, you know, do. And very frankly, people that are responsible for doing it need to take responsibility for it and be held accountable. Also, an audit, if you will, or a check to see, I'm concerned that maybe some of our, our employees got a great letter from the superintendent Friday, but I, I worry about the woman from the, who's a parapro that hasn't heard from her union yet as to what her status might be or whatever. They may have the same problems we have with addresses and whatever, but it'd be good for folks to, to have a better understanding of that. So kind of a check of the cleanliness, building by building, by district folk, and, and then also seeing if the kinds of communication from the unions have gone out. Thank you.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes, this is just to piggyback off of Eve and I, I thought she was about to say this, but making sure, and then maybe just going back and do a check and balance of making sure that teachers have all the PPE that they need in their buildings. And I, I was thinking Eve was going to say that, but that's part of that, the cleanliness too. But making sure they have access to all of the, the materials they need.
Ms. Bates?
Can, can we get a report on that on Thursday in Health and Safety? And then it'll become part of the minutes in record or we could get a further update at the next meeting. But we are meeting on Thursday. We are asking for a report from the administration on the school reopening safety guidelines. So a report as assigned may be reported at that committee.
Okay, any, any other assignments? Okay, having no other business for us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye-bye.